All right, I call this meeting to order. Stand for the pledge.
To the flag.
Americans, the states of America.
To the republic.
To the republic for which it seems.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
All right, do I have a motion on the minutes for June 16th? On my one?
Move to approve.
Making sure there's nothing from, nothing from Jim or Jamie? Dan? Okay. Oh, we need to start out, we have to ask them where they are.
We do.
There we go.
Thank you.
Sorry. So we do have two school board members that are here via Zoom. So I'm going to have them state their presence and if there is anyone in the room with them. So Jamie, if you'd like to start.
Yeah, Jamie Fitzpatrick, I'm in Deadwood, South Dakota. I am alone in a room in a hotel.
Okay, and Jim?
Yeah, I'm in a home in Chilmark, Massachusetts, and there's no one in the room with me.
Okay, great, all right. Because we have two people remote, we will be doing all votes via roll call vote. So the motion is to move forward the minutes on June 16th. Jamie?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
I abstain, I was not here, I believe.
Heather?
Yes.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so thank you. Okay, do I have an action on the minutes for July 14th?
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All right, well, Jamie?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
Believe I was on vacation then, too. Abstain, sorry.
Maura?
Yes.
Yes.
And myself is. All right, we are going to go straight to policy, B E D H, public participation at board meetings for first and second.
I think it would be good to review the, the change, the changes that public comment will be for residents of Kingston, Newton, or Fremont, parents of current students, or staff members of Sanborn Regional Schools.
Move to approve policy B E D H for first and second read.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Jamie?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
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 Amy?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Okay, I've already sent around most of the manifest documents. We'll do the, the Form DOE 25 after Matt has a chance to. So we'll move straight to nominations, Tom.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Lindsay Jordan for the position of social worker. I would like to nominate Kaylee Coburn for grade one teacher at Bakey. Chase, Chelsea Mallard for esteemed teacher at Bakey. Don Thurlow for sped teacher at Bakey. And Cassie Zukowski for speech and language pathologist at Bakey. These are all of the summer hires, by the way. We did take a look at the number of staff turned over because there were some rumors going around that we were having an exceptionally high number this year. And we're only 4% above previous years. So considering COVID and the number of people who have just flat out left education, we're doing very well. Tracy Connors, grade six at Memorial. Maureen McCardle, math interventionist at Memorial. Jen's Victoria, science teacher at the middle school. Julie Conroe, school counselor at the high school. Kaitlyn Drisling, math teacher at the high school. Lindsay Hopkins, English teacher at the high school. Lisa House, sped school counselor at the high school. And Jillian Spiro, math teacher at the high school.
Move to approve.
Second.
Maura.
All right, Amy?
No, I have any question?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Gone here. All right, any discussion? All right.
Oh, no.
Yep.
All right, Jamie?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
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 And myself is a yes. All right, resignations.
Thank you, and again, I'd like to just address this a little bit further. There are two or three people on this list that we were really sad to see go. It's the first time I've ever said this in my time as a central office employee. A number of them I've spoken to personally, I did not leave the exit interview up to our HR professional. They took jobs closer to home. Some of them reduced an hour commute to zero to be in their children's schools where their, their kids live. A number of them took administrative positions and moved up in their careers. So I just want to kind of put to rest this, this feeling that their education is losing a lot of good people because of what's going on this last year. And the turnover everywhere in America is significant. And we still are only a few percent higher than what we were last year. So I feel really good about that. Emily Anderson at the Bakey School has resigned. Susan Burns, special education teacher at the Memorial School. At the middle school, Karen Emery and Victoria Perry. At the high school, Amanda Bradley, Michelle Farrar, Ashley Harble, Janine Jorgensen, Nicole St. Jean, Erin Smith Davis, Heather Wheeler, and Michelle.
Move to accept with regret.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Jamie?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Superintendent's report.
Good evening. It's been a very busy summer. Certainly, we, we have been working hard on the, the plan that we're here to discuss this evening. And I think it's also important to know that we've been working really hard on our strategic plan. The administrators had a retreat where we spent two days working on the strategic plan and figuring out the steps that we need to take to, over the next five years to improve our district. That plan will be presented to the community and the board sometime this fall. We're still, we're still working on it. We continue to work on Alma, our grading system. And the process for NEASK, which is our accreditation process, is significant. We are going to be working very hard on aligning our curriculum vertically, which means per grade level, so the first grade outcomes. And then we're also going to be working on our curriculum in a horizontal manner, which means the way that each year builds on the previous year. Those are really big pieces. The, the, the books that were ordered this spring were delivered. We are very, very excited, the teachers are very excited to have more books for students. Thank you, everyone. And the math program has been received and sent out to the K through six teachers. The seven through 12 teachers are piloting a new math program this year, and they're very excited to give, you know, give that a run and see how it goes and look at other options for a proposal or to bring a recommendation to the board toward the end of this year. I do just want to remind everyone before we get into this meeting, I know this is a very, very difficult topic. And I just want to remind members of the public that our policy states that each person who would like to speak during public comment has three minutes. One time. And we will be holding to the three minutes at one time per person. Many, many people have written emails pretty much equally on both sides of this issue. And it has been incredibly hard for everyone involved to figure out a plan that meets the needs of everyone, which is virtually impossible. No matter what we do, someone who's going to leave here tonight, very unhappy. I ask one thing, that we model the behavior that we expect of our children. That we be polite and courteous. I also want to remind everyone that this is not a public forum. We are not having a debate this evening. You have a right to speak for three minutes, your point of view and your point of view alone, the board will not be answering questions. The questions should have been submitted when we set out the plans last week. The administration, myself, Dr. Haynes, Ms. Gutterman, Mr. Stack, we are not going to get into a back and forth with people about what people believe or agree or don't agree on. We're here to listen. So I just want to set clear expectations for the evening, and I'm modeling what we do for our children. We tell our children in school what the expectations are, and then we work together to meet those expectations and have a successful process. Again, 30% of people are not going to like whatever the decision is. 30%. And I'm sorry for that, there's nothing we can do. We're doing the best we can, it is very, very hard for everyone. So having said that, I think that concludes the superintendent's report for this evening, and I look forward to a productive and calm meeting.
All right, on to committee reports. Policy?
Thank you.
Policy committee met yesterday, Tuesday, August 17th, to go over the three policies, one that we've already spoken about, B E D H. Present at the meeting was myself, Dawn Dutton, Tammy Mahoney, Superintendent Ambrose, and Vice Principal Jennifer Mitchson from the high school. And our next meeting is on September 18th at 5:00. Excellence in Student Achievement?
Okay, so Excellence in Student Achievement Committee met earlier today, and I will summarize that meeting at our next meeting. We, I, our, our last meeting was on June 16th, and I didn't, I haven't given a report on that, so I'm going to do that even though it was a couple of months ago. So come with me. So in attendance at that meeting, myself, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Ms. Dutton, Mr. Ambrose, Dr. Haynes, Ms. Levitt, Mr. Stack, Mr. Malilla. Ms. Levitt presented a summary of information gathered from discussions with admissions officers with a recommendation to remove class rank from the transcript. There was general agreement that it should be optional, since it provides an advantage for students ranked at the top, but it can cause other students' applications to be disregarded. Sort of off the, at the first, out of the gate there. Other factors considered in the admission process are course load rigor and high school rating. And the district will continue to focus on areas that impact those, such as instruction and access to college-level courses. Dr. Haynes presented recommendations from Ms. Evans' work at the high school this year, including an increase in math class time for instruction and practice, and a vertically-aligned seven-through-12 curriculum with clear outcomes. She also recommended that the rubrics should be aligned and teachers trained in using them. There was general agreement with these recommendations, and some discussion ensued regarding some ways to implement them. Dr. Haynes reported that illustrative math will be piloted next year, that's this coming year, in grade seven-through-12. The committee finalized these goals for the coming year. Three goals. Monitor the district's progress to move to a numeric grading system that translates into a letter grade. Monitor the district's progress toward achieving the goal of more instructional time in math and reading. And monitor the district's progress to research and implement a new math curriculum for grades seven-through-12 by fall of 2022. Our next meeting is four weeks from today, September 15th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance?
Yeah, we had a finance meeting on the 16th of June also. I won't read the whole thing, just some of the highlights of it, and then it's posted so people can see that they want more details. At the time, we expected that we were going to end up with an unexpended balance of $1.8 million roughly. That included the making the $100,000 payment, $50,000 payments to the different trust funds that were voted on by the voters. It included getting the money back to the taxpayers of what was withheld last year and reducing the amount that was withheld this year. It also included a one-time special education cost of $260,000. So that was the net-net that was presented at the time. Superintendent Ambrose also mentioned that there was the balloon payment, the standard balloon payment was coming out. We reviewed the capital expenditures and all the different trust funds at the meeting. There was no real spending ongoing, as it were, other than interest was coming in, et cetera, but no big-ticket items and spends. We also reviewed the COVID spending. And there is a total of $2.2 million, of which $300,000 has not been granted, that's, that we had anticipated, we are anticipating getting in. And we have totally spent $692,000. And this was a reconciliation that was done because in April we reported 1.1 million, but that was an error. And 692 has been confirmed as total expended. The April number included that we had spent the monies because there was plans for the last funding, and we had not. And that's, that's about it for the, for those minutes. We met today again, and a couple of points on today's meeting. One is that the unexpended balance, the final unexpended balance that was just passed around to be signed for the DOE 2025, was actually closer to 2.3 million, and we'll be reconciling that in the next finance committee next month from that versus the projection. But that means it's 2.3 million that will be rolling back to taxpayers. Also, there was a budget request that was approved, recommended for $62,786 to be moved from salaries to other professional services. And that's to relocate funds for a speech-language pathology vacancy at Memorial. So no extra spending, just different line item change. And then I'll get the, the official minutes out when I get back on the, today's meeting.
Thank you. Facilities?
Yeah, the facilities committee met on Monday, August 9th, and the meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. Jamie Fitzpatrick, Pete Broderick, and the safety, school safety and facilities manager, Dan Doyle, met at Bakey School. Jim Baker was present being telephone conferencing. The committee reviewed recommendations by a local arborist, presented by Dan Doyle to remove four trees, along with removing dead limbs on two others. Dan, Jamie, and Pete reviewed the trees at the site. We discussed the necessity of completing this work and voted unanimously to recommend that the work should be done. We also reviewed policy DJE, which stipulates purchases and contracts under 25,000 require at least three competitive bids. Mr. Doyle agreed to solicit the bids. And we also discussed the need for repairs to a chimney at Bakey School. Mr. Doyle will follow up with recommendations on work needed as soon as possible. You're going to hear more about the, the tree bids tonight, we have three bids. I believe that Mr. Doyle will be presenting that, if not, I can. The next facilities meeting is scheduled for September 1st at 3:30 PM in room 121 of the middle school wing.
Thank you. Public relations?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no report.
Okay. Personnel, our next meeting is September 15th at 3:00. Anything for SST?
No, not at this time.
All right. Maura?
No, we have not met yet. Do you know when the next meeting is? Oh, I just got an email, I think. First weekend of September. Got an email. Sorry, I got a lot of emails today.
Yes, we did.
They're still coming in, actually. Yeah, they are. I don't want to hold this up, I'm not sure. I know there's a meeting in September, actually, I may have it on my phone. Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have it.
Okay. All right.
Student Council Representative Report. Um, I'm Johnson, if any of you don't know, and I'm the student council representative. Um, we have not started school yet, but all sports started, I think, on Monday or Sunday for football teams. But we've all started, we've all really been enjoying it. But I wanted to let you all know that yesterday, the, me and the NHS president, I'm NHS vice president, are starting a soup kitchen in the community where we prepare meals in the school and then deliver them to other locations for people that need it. Um, we were able to have our first one yesterday, and our field hockey team and the, me and the NHS president were both there, and we were able to deliver 30 meals to Fremont, Newton, and we weren't able to get Kingston because they weren't allowing it with COVID and stuff, but we were able to get two of the towns, and we were able to make 30 meals and deliver them. And I heard at least from Newton that all of the meals were distributed to people that really wanted them, and we're really grateful for them. So we're looking to do another one in September, but that's all I have, and next week is the first student council meeting of the year.
Can, can we just give you a round of applause? We'll, strangely, I will reach out to Kingston and try to help.
Okay.
I did also want to take a moment to thank Mr. Stack for helping out with this.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Mr. Stack. You did it for August.
Yes, we did.
It's awesome, congrats. It's great.
All right, first public comment, and I just would like to remind everyone again, we allow three minutes. And you just need to come up to the microphone, state your name and the town you are from.
Do you want me to go to this one or this, that one? My mom wants me to read something.
Oh, yeah.
Then.
You can go right up to that one. Yep.
What was that? I think it's for masks.
Yeah, it's first public comment.
First public comment.
Okay.
It'd be for anything.
Oh, okay, I didn't know.
Any item on the agenda?
I didn't know if it had to be.
Nope.
Nope.
This is on regards of Jen Lampron in Newton, New Hampshire. Dear Mr. Ambrose, School Board and Community Members, I want my children in school in-person learning because that is the best for their education. My children, like me, are rule followers and will wear a mask without trouble or complaint, if that is the policy of the school, whether it be on the bus, in the classroom, or on the athletic field. So whatever actions are necessary to keep my children in school and on the athletic field, be it pool testing, systematic testing, masking etiquette, I stand behind these policies to support keeping the children in-person, in-school, learning and doing. I personally support masks in the classroom to reduce potentials for spread, despite and maybe because of the knowledge that children are commonly asymptomatic. I believe that mask wearing isn't just about me, per se, as it is more about the community as a whole. I would do anything to protect my friends, neighbors, people I interact with, coworkers, especially those who are immunocompromised, safer from spread. I encourage mask breaks to be made available, but I do believe in the science of masks, and I personally wear one at my place of work for the full day. The mask does not make me feel depressed, depraved, or unable to breathe. It does reduce the ability for others to read my facial reactions, but I am working on my smizing, Tyra Banks' term for smiling with your eyes. I do encourage you to enable children to participate in athletics with mask optional, especially outside, since spread is considered minimal outside. I do hope that you can contact the camp residing within our district to meeting to inquire about their experience this summer, similar to my request last year, when unfortunately no one did contact YMCA Camp Lincoln. I believe they were at 80% capacity this summer with busing required, masking on the bus and inside buildings, where most outdoor activities were enjoyed, spaced, and mask-free. And the kids were able to be safe and still enjoy summer outside at camp. And I'm guessing there have been transmission free for the summer, this week is week nine for their summer camp. You could use the data from summer school, summer camp in the district, but these numbers are so small that I assume them to be irrelevant, whereas Camp Lincoln has hundreds of childrens in session every week. We didn't expect 18 months ago to be where we are now, but with no end in sight, we need to keep on moving, learning, and living. The most important to me is that the children be in school with good, qualified teachers. So my other priority for the district is to evaluate what is truly going on in the district through anonymous surveys and other means, that we are losing some of our best employees, especially at the high school. I hope you have a plan to investigate the true root cause, not just theories of mass exodus this summer. Our teachers, paras, counselors are, are main assets, resources in the district. So for, for our children's educational quality, it is paramount that we increase our retention. I appreciate your consideration and wish you and your team all the best at, at school, we convenes in less than two weeks. Thanks and best regards, Jen Lampron, Newton, New Hampshire.
All right, and I do have to just make a quick comment at, you're good to go. At 6:30, we do have to stop quickly because we have to have a public hearing on a couple of occasions. So you are good to go, and we are done, we will, 6:30, we will go to our public hearing.
Hi, my name's Roger Susi from Kingston. First, thank you to the school board and Superintendent Ambrose for the good work you do and for listening to the members of the community tonight. My family may not have lived in Kingston our whole life, but this is where we've made our home. And I believe this, in this community, and I believe that everyone attending, both in person and virtually, want what is best for themselves and their families. Additionally, we all want to feel like the community we live in supports us in what matters to us. However, polarizing issues can easily make us feel that our personal beliefs are threatened and puts us on the defensive. Such are the times when we need to remember that we're all trying to do what we think is right. And if we respect one another despite our differences, only from that point can we make a meaningful progress to find the answers to questions that we have as a community and the needs that we have as a community. I believe that taking prior action to avoid a problem is much better than reacting to a problem that has already occurred. With the awareness of a pending risk comes the advantage of time to prepare for what it may bring. We put up fences to keep our family pets from running into the road. We replace the tires on our cars before they go flat and put snow tires on before the winter storms hit, rather than after the snow is eight inches deep and we're sliding off the road. The reality is that preparedness is expensive in time, effort, and money. Coupled with the fact that it typically doesn't impact our present daily lives, it's very easy sometimes to postpone, overlook, or simply rationalize not doing anything at all. Now, I'm not here to contradict anyone's beliefs, sources of information, or preferences. I'm here to say that it's better to have a plan to prevent a problem and not need it than to need a way out of a problem and not have one. The two primary risks I see are the health of our student and community as a whole, and the need for our students to continue to receive a quality education through a curriculum that adapts seamlessly and effectively when students are not able to be in person. I believe that if our community leaders, school board, and school administration take the proper steps to prepare for the risks we face before they happen, we will collectively be in a much better position should something bad come knocking at our door. Thank you.
All right, and really quickly, 6:29, so we'll just go, we'll just go to our.
Just so everyone understands what's happening, we have a scheduled public hearing for the donation of some funds. We will move to the scheduled public hearing because it has to be done at a precise time. Then, once that's done, we'll resume the public comment regarding the matters on the board agenda this evening, okay? So we're, we're going to go back to public comment in just a few minutes.
Yes, I apologize, we're not trying to cut anybody.
Yep.
Have to.
Yep. Just hang tight.
Procedure. All right.
I'm trying to pull up the letter for that. Okay, so the first one is going to be a grant from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation. And it's for $10,000, and it's going to be used for Career Pathway Partnership. I believe Mr. Stack is coming over to say something else on it.
Why? I'll take questions if you have it, I don't have any case.
Say, it's, this is a continuation of the grant that we received last year to do some different work with our kids in the Career Pathways Program. Some, some equipment that we get for them, some certification programs that we do with them. Hopefully, we'll be able to take some industry tour trips with the kids this year, so it really just supplements that career awareness work that we're doing with all the kids.
Do you have any questions? Jim or Jamie, do you have any questions?
No, thank you for sending the terms of that proposal or grant, Mr. Stack.
No problem, Jim.
Motion to accept.
First, we have to ask if there's any public comment.
Oh, sorry, you're right.
The grant.
Would anyone like to speak?
Would anyone from the public like to speak about the receipt of the grant?
$10,000.
Okay. We'll take it. Okay, motion, right answer.
Yep.
All right. There's no further discussion, we will do a roll call vote, Jamie?
Yes, and thanks.
Jim?
Yes, and thank you for the hard work on that.
Yes.
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 Myself, yes.
Yes, 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 myself, yes.
I made the motion. Heather, Heather seconded it up.
All right, since there's so many people here tonight, we have to do this public hearing for anything over five thousand dollars. So the next one that we're receiving is for fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars from the Sanborn Youth Football and Cheerleading Corporation. And this is going to be for for lacrosse and ish ish. And Bob is here to speak more about it.
Yep. Hi, I'm Bob Dawson. I'm the Athletic Director and an Assistant Principal here. So there you guys, I believe, have a memo from the people at Sanborn Youth Football with the sad demise of their program. They had some equipment that we've already taken and fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars in funds. They would like to designate that with the intention of the beginning of a lacrosse program. There are some difficulties in the beginning of lacrosse program. It can be a pretty expensive sport to start with, you know, like a single lacrosse goal can be about seven hundred and fifty bucks just for one, and we need a bunch. And we'd also have to look at some equity issues between having the boys program and the girls program. So we'd have to look at that. They've given us some flexibility here in their donation to use it for other things that doesn't work. I am looking into not just starting our own program, but potentially co-opping with another school. We do that for ice hockey right now. Epping pays us seven hundred and fifty bucks a kid to play hockey. In addition to the ice time that the kids fundraise for. So those are all possibilities that we'll look at once the dust settles from the craziness of last year.
Comments? Jim or Jamie, anything?
Yeah, I've got some questions. Mr. Dawson, how many kids do you think will participate in this program? And do you have an estimate of the annual cost?
Yep. The to run a viable lacrosse team for boys, you need probably about twenty kids. It's a pretty active sport and to keep kids going in and out of the field, you have eleven on the field at a time, but you want to have, you know, extra players to cover for injuries and to run it at the varsity level, you would want to have a certain skill level as well because it is a contact sport. So we think between twenty and twenty-five to make a viable varsity boys team and probably about the same for a girls team. I ballparked what it costs us to run, say, a soccer team between transportation and coaches' costs and new soccer balls and things like that. It's around eleven thousand a year, I think, to run a varsity sports in in the neighborhood of that. If we're going to do things that I would highly recommend we do with lacrosse, like purchase the helmets for the boys in particular as a safety aspect, it gets it goes up and up and up. We do have the field space and I think we can find coaches in the interest that one of the difficulties is establishing a program can be pretty expensive because the upfront costs are pretty high, but we'll look at it.
So clarify for Mr. Baker. Mr. Baker, could I just add something to that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. The the if you read the the letter that was sent, it says, however, if after reasonable efforts are made, a lacrosse a lacrosse program for Sanborn student athletes or a co-op arrangement is not possible, the funds may be used to support our athletes in all sports. So Mr. Dawson is going to put together a budget item for consideration for the creation of a lacrosse program during the budget process. I'd also like him to look at middle school tennis, but that's just another, anyway, that's an aside, but hint hint. But I just want everyone to know that that if we look at this and it's cost prohibitive or we don't have the interest, then the money can be used for a different program, accepting the money does not bind us to starting a lacrosse program. They're just asking us to take a look at it.
Thanks for that clarification. The only other comment I have is that when we considered ice hockey, bringing that into something that the school would fund, we did a warrant article with the towns. And I would think that we should also consider this as something that should be done through a warrant article. If as far as funding lacrosse goes, not necessarily as far as accepting the the grant. But it would be conditional.
Thank you. We can discuss that in the budget process once we get a better handle on what the potential costs would be.
Okay.
I just have a quick question. Um, so I know at least for a lot of other gear, it like you use it. And sometimes like I cracked my helmet in softball this year, like it's not uncommon to crack things or break things. And they are quite costly, but I think a lot of we can probably have extra helmets. But in my opinion, if you join a sport, generally you know around what the cost is. And a lot of people will be joining lacrosse, probably already paid. So like, I do understand why you're trying to have it open for everyone. But I know a lot of people would also be very happy to pay for a helmet or something in order to have their kids playing. Because I know like my mom's like, we can do this sport, but we have to understand that it is a costly sport. Like there's all sports are costly. They're not. And none of them are really cheap, but I think we can a lot of parents do understand that.
When I was talking about helmets, it was a it's a preference of mine that the school district owns all the helmets that are worn by our athletes because it gives us some control over protection. We're providing those athletes. This year's budget and potential, my intention is to purchase hockey helmets for our ice hockey team. And they would be required to wear those helmets because we would have those helmets sent out to be checked, recertified, just as we do with the football helmets every year. And we are going to we're on a rotation now buying new softball helmets every other year. And the softball athletes are required to have those. The coaches are supposed to check them to be Noxy certified. And also the face shield for baseball is now a requirement based on basically I put that requirement in place for the safety of our athletes. So it's something I want to build on over time. A previous district, we did the same thing. We bought every helmet for every athlete in every sport. So we had control.
Motion.
Motion to accept.
Second. Jamie?
I.
Jim?
Yes.
I.
Yes.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Yes. All right. We will now resume public comment.
I'm confused. I'm sorry. The other the other ones for the.
It's not over a limit.
It's not over five thousand.
So we don't have to do that during.
Okay, so it's not over five thousand. Okay.
Right, there's no public.
There was no number there, but.
That's right.
Hello, my name is Pete Colby. I'm a forty-year resident of Newton. I'm a Sanborn graduate, albeit barely. Maybe.
Just for the record, it's nice to finally meet you.
Yes, yes, it's good to put a face to your name.
Let me tell you about him.
I never had you as a teacher, so you can try, but I was going to plead my case for masks being optional. I come out here and I see that anyone voting on it is either traveling or not wearing a mask. So it seems as though I can probably cut it a bit short in that we can agree that masks are going to be optional. I did do a little R and D, so I'll use a few of my minutes. That it seems that there is legal precedent because New Hampshire is a Dillon's Rule State, which simply says that anyone imposing a mask mandate on their own would be overstepping their boundaries. That the school board as a substate governing body may only engage in an activity if it's specifically sanctioned by state government, which since the mask mandate was lifted and conquered, I'm not quite sure that anyone has the authority to impose mask mandatory or mask being mandatory. And just last week, the High Court in Texas ruled on that very same thing, I believe. So I'll cut it short, and I just think parents should have their own freedoms and responsibilities, not have to co-opt their decisions with the school board, the government or any other entity, really. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
This is not from me. I'm not speaking tonight. This is from another mom, Caitlin Pekarsky, P E.
Wait, you cannot speak for another parent. You can only speak for yourself. That's been the rule here for years. She's a student. That's her mother.
We talked about.
Yep. And so if you want to speak for yourself, you may, but you may not read a letter for someone else.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll speak for myself.
Perfect. I'm not surprised. I mean, saying.
I figured. Well, a little bit of it that it's related to me anyhow. So me, Phyllis. Last year was my daughter's second grade year at Bakersfield. And luckily for this great community and our awesome neighborhood, has a lot of friendships. When in school began with masks required, I was concerned about her ability to keep the mask on, make new friendships with her face covered, develop a relationship with teachers she can't touch, and most of all, be expected to stay in her seat all day. To my surprise, she seemed to take it very well. I never heard any complaints from her and her teacher never expressed to me that she was struggling. When I asked her about her experience each day, she would tell me, it's fine, no big deal, I can handle it. I was relieved to think that she didn't seem to be suffering too much. At the end of the year, however, I came to find out that wasn't the case at all. On the last day of school, all of her work was sent home. As I began going through my work, her work, my heart sank. Several journal entries talked about how miserable she was. She talked about how terrible wearing a mask was all day, how hot and uncomfortable she was. She talked about how hard it was not to give her friend a hug on the playground who had just fallen and gotten hurt. She mentioned a time where she went to push her friend on the swing, but was spoken to by a staff member that she couldn't touch her. My biggest heartbreak came from her expressing how hard it is to have a mask on for her forty-five minute bus ride home to Newton because she's hot, hungry and thirsty, and she's not allowed to move her mask to take a sip of water or have a snack. All of this was in her journals that were written at school. My mind was blown. These are our babies silently suffering, and I had no idea of the day-to-day torture she was feeling, but never outwardly expressed. So when administration claims that the children have no problem wearing a mask, it's the parents with the issue? I beg to differ. And I know a number of parents sitting in this audience and watching at home who received the same shock. I will not do this to my child again. I will not continue to confuse my child with rules that don't make sense even to me, never mind my second grader. It's impossible to answer why she can play with her friends outside of school but not at school or why she can go to summer camp and gymnastics class without a mask on, but at school, it may be different. Is it a liability concern for the school board or is it just political virtue signaling? As the people entrusted with the well-being of our children, you should be thinking about liabilities concerning detrimental psychological and developmental impact that.
You're over four minutes now.
I am?
Yes.
Okay, well, the point was made.
All right, I'll try to rush. First, I would like one of you to request a postponement of this meeting. Dropping this draft on the rest of us an hour before this meeting.
Well, no, the drop went out Friday.
Okay, we only got it at my house today. Okay, now if we're gonna I want time if we're gonna go back and forth.
Yeah, sorry. Can you state your name and the town?
My name's Rob Chisola. I live at one forty Main Street, Kingston. I have a second, sixth, eighth and tenth going into school this year. I spoke to you last year and asked you to put the kids first, and I did not see that. That statement right there will tell you everything you need to know. Looking at this draft, I would again ask for a postponement because number one, I would like to see all input from the teachers' union, all input for your experts, and I would like to be directed to the parents so we could see it. Okay, because I want to know what you want to know. I want to see that message you just gave her while we're doing this meeting, while she was talking.
I'm taking the time.
Okay.
That people are talking.
Okay, just need to know. Okay. Now, in the last year, I've met with twenty-seven doctors, thirty-two nurses, forty-one schoolmen, eighteen school workers, sixteen dentists, sixty-one police, fifty-one firemen, and seventy people a week, ages twenty-one to ninety-two. All right, I've had COVID, I've had Delta, and I've seen it up close and personal. How it works is works with every other virus. The first one gets it bad, the rest of the house does not. I know that because they got eleven in my house. Okay, getting into the masks, I wish I had more than three minutes here. The second you put a mask on and you touch your face, it becomes ineffective. The second a child puts a mask on, it becomes ineffective because they've touched their face. The second they touch their mask or their face, it becomes ineffective. All that was used to protect children, but it did not, didn't protect anybody. You've all had COVID. Most of you have all had COVID. Okay?
I have not had.
Has anyone asked in last year, I watched one of you say, what were the parochial counts? We'll look at in two weeks. Did anyone get that answer? It wasn't given to us. Okay. What were the total death counts in Kingston, Newton last year? Total deaths. I don't mean COVID. I mean total deaths. That number hasn't been presented. Okay, and if you don't know it, you shouldn't be having this vote this evening. All righty. Now, getting to the vaccines real quick, okay? The vaccines, as they're coming out right now in Israel and other places, have shown a fifty percent breakthrough rate. Okay, unless you've had your third dote in the last fifteen minutes, basically your vaccine's ineffective. That leads me to my next point. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm rushing here, but I don't have much time. In your algorithm, okay, you're not requiring vaccine people to be tested. In your algorithm, you're only requiring unvaccinated. How much do you want to divide this community? How much half these people don't want to be vaccinated? Half do. And with this algorithm, that's basically useless because if you've had COVID, if you have the vaccine, you can still get it, you can still transmit it. You're not protecting anybody. Okay, you just become asymptomatic and make it deadly. All righty. Now, as far as COVID goes and Delta, COVID was tough. It was hard. Thought I was gonna die, but I watched it go through my house with no problem because, like I said, with any virus, first one gets it bad, second doesn't, third doesn't, even though they have it. I got eleven in my house and that's all through. Okay, Delta, same thing, not even close to what COVID was. Okay? I don't see any of that in here. Alls I see is division. Alls I see is things that I've seen from every other school board in every other state, coming down from the teachers' union that you're going to vote on today. Last year, you had a public speaking like we did today, and I'm kind of upset about the process, to be honest with you. Okay? You already have a program. You're already going to vote on in two or three, you're going to change this before you vote. Okay? What is those changes based on? That's just changes based on information we don't have. I want to know your expert. I want to see their background. I want references on them. And I want to see all correspondence between the teachers' union and you. Because as she mentioned before, this has become political and you're using your children to do that. That's horrifying to me. I want you to educate them.
Hello, my name is JJ DeFeo and I live in Newton. I would just like to say that most of what he said is not particularly accurate. CDC data and FDA data, as well as data from the World Health Organization, both show that all the way through eight months, vaccination is still effective in people under eighteen. If I remember. So through eight months, which would be through December for anyone under the age of sixteen, which is what in April was when the New Hampshire state allowed people under sixteen to get it. That means that at least through December, people that are vaccinated are protected, which means that if what you're saying is just, yes. No, no.
I'm just going to ask that everyone in the audience is quiet while we have the speaker at the podium.
And the speaker should be addressing the board.
Okay. So I asked for the board's consideration that that vaccination status is taken into effect when the policy is finalized. And I hope that and personally, I believe that it is in the best interests of the students that masks should be or mask status should be based on vaccination status. And I believe that if you are not vaccinated, then you should be forced to wear a mask. This is not, this is, this is not.
I'm going to have to stop. I will stop the meeting if we can't be respectful of each other.
This isn't, this is not about our freedom. This is about our safety. This is about whether or not children will go home and die.
Hey, excuse me, we are not doing it like this tonight. We are going to be respectful of each other. You don't have to agree, but you have to be respectful. I understand everyone has differences of opinions and that is okay, and that is what this is about. This is about speaking to your own opinion. We get to hear everyone's opinion and we get to deliberate.
We get to hear everyone's opinion and we get to deliberate.
I just want to be clear that failure to do so will result in the removal from this meeting. Okay, so this is the last warning.
So, let me just wrap this up very quickly. This isn't about, this isn't about freedom. This is about our safety and about our security. And I believe that that is the board's number one goal and that is the number one consideration that the board should take. And I believe that the best way to do that is via masks. But, and that's the easiest way for people to help prevent the spread of COVID-19 and there are plenty, and the variants thereof, Delta, Beta, and Eta, I believe are the three most prevalent. And so I believe that the number one thing that we can do is require masks for any student that is unvaccinated.
Hello, my name's Caitlin Di Tomaso. I'm a resident of Kingston, New Hampshire. Tonight, I want to explain my opposition to mask-mating children and I won't be going into debate over whether or not masks cause harm and whether or not that's been proven. Instead, I'm gonna be giving you a brief overview of our respiratory system. My background, education, experience in the healthcare world for over a decade permit me to express these concerns for my fact-checking peers. The human respiratory process in its most basic simplified form is how oxygen and a carbon dioxide are exchanged between the cells and blood vessels in our body. Respiration begins at the mouth or nose where oxygenated air is brought in before moving down to the pharynx, larynx, and trachea. The trachea branches into two bronchi, each leading into a lung. Each bronchus divides into even smaller tubes called bronchioles. And at the base of those bronchioles are sacs called alveoli. This is where gas exchange occurs. The exchange with our circulatory system helps to move oxygen-rich blood to tissues and cells. Limiting or inhibiting the free gas exchange where it begins means the process itself is not working at optimal capacity. Here's where I stop. For anyone to say that masks work and they're proven not to cause harm, I ask how? How are they not harmful if they're limiting the free exchange of air to continue the respiratory process? If you say masks don't restrict the free air exchange, then what's the purported use to stop the spread of the virus? I have grave concerns for any person who is in favor of limiting or reducing the free exchange of air into a tiny developing body, let alone in an environment which it does not permit fresh circulating air or is temperature-controlled. I'm not a monster sharing disinformation only to be torn down by fact-checkers. I'm an educated mother of four and I'm a nurse. I've cared for patients who've had every infectious disease imaginable, including COVID. Somehow managed to avoid spreading that and somehow avoid, managed to bring it home to my family. I want to work with the school administration, not against. But we can't claim we're all in this together if you're dismissing the voices of concerned parents over the well-being of their children. I'm happy to dedicate my time, energy, resources to help this administration however I can so long as my ability to make health decisions for my children is honored. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Stickney. I don't have a ton to say except I think that a lot of what's going on is driven by fear that if you look at the actual statistics, it shouldn't be. New Hampshire is doing wonderful. New Hampshire has done wonderful through this entire, entire horrible thing. Through all of COVID, we've done such a great and amazing job. And it shows. I was literally in Exeter Hospital two weeks ago and I was in the elevator with one of the nurses that worked there in the ER. I asked her, "How, how is COVID going?" And she said, "You wouldn't believe it, it's like proof, it's gone." That is how they're dealing with it, just right over at Exeter Hospital. And here we are discussing whether we're gonna restrict the oxygen level that our kids take in. It's absolutely ridiculous. This is New Hampshire, this is live free or die. Why are we doing this to our children? Why are we, why are we gonna instill all of this fear into our children when it's just not there statistically to warrant that? They don't deserve this. I have children that can't learn without seeing their teachers' faces. You know, just because one student may be capable of wearing the mask doesn't mean they all are. A lot of them struggle to learn with the mask on. They need to see a teacher's face and see the mouth move. A lot of people don't understand the difficulties that a lot of students have and their different learning disabilities. And they're not taking that into account. It's not fair to our children. It's not fair to the families because you're literally forcing us into decisions for our own children when those should be placed upon the parents themselves and only the parents. And no one has the right to take my parenting decisions away from me. Thank you.
Hold on just one second, hold on. Thank, thank you, Jacqueline, nice to see you again. I, I, I just want to be clear because there may be some confusion. If people didn't read the plan, the plan is proposed that masks are optional. They're recommended, not required. No, I'm, I'm just simply reminding people in the event that anyone in the audience didn't, didn't... I don't vote, I'm the superintendent. Stop interrupting me or you're gonna be thrown out of this meeting. You have, that is the last warning. You understand me? That's it. You're done. I, I, no, I'm not having a back and forth. I'm simply clarifying that the plan that has been presented to the board by the administration says that masks are recommended, not required. I just want to make sure in case one gentleman commented that he didn't get the plan until today, I just wanted to make sure that you know what the plan says. That's all I'm, that's all I'm doing. Clear, making sure that the facts are clear.
Hi, my name's Kyle Susie, I'm from Kingston. And thank you so much for taking the time to listen tonight. I am here to advocate for what the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics are recommending, that all staff and students over age 2 wear masks inside schools. We all want the kids to have a normal school year with no masks. But these are not normal times. The indisputable facts are that we are still in this pandemic, but we are not facing the same virus as last school year. The Delta variant is more contagious and infecting children more than the original strain of COVID. Our children are at even greater risk this year than last year. Preventative measures are needed to keep the transmission rates low and the schools open. The kids need to be in school and personally, I need to be able to work. I can see how many think that a mask optional policy is a win for everyone. But in actuality, the only one that wins is the virus. If we have some students and staff unmasked, COVID will spread and the numbers will go up. Sadly, masking after the numbers go up is too late since we've already let the virus spread and possibly mutate to create even worse variants, as we've already seen. Prevention is key. We should not let our guard down when the numbers are down. I would never want our kids to mask without good reason and this is a very good reason to mask. It's inevitable that the numbers will go up without taking preventative precautions. We need the cooperation of everyone wearing masks in order to prevent the spread and keep the transmission low in schools and keep the kids in school. In the end, I just want all of our children, everyone, to be able to attend school in person in a safe environment. I pray that we can come together as a community to keep all the staff and students safe this year. This decision needs to be guided by science. We are not scientists, but the most esteemed and trusted ones in our nation have spoken and they have made their recommendations crystal clear and I believe we should follow them. Thank you.
Would the, would the community like Dr. Haynes to make her presentation before we continue public comment? Because it might be helpful to know some of the information that she's going to share. If not, we could just continue the public comment, that's perfectly fine. Absolutely, we mailed it out, we placed it on Facebook Friday. We emailed it to every Constant Contact in the district twice over the last two days. Absolutely, Dr. Haynes is right there. She might be able to send it to you. Do you have a device with you that you can read it off? You're, you're literally standing right next to her, sir. And that's part of why I thought it might be good for her to present. The, you, you will not be allowed to question Dr. Haynes. I think you missed the beginning of the meeting, sir. And I, I'll just, I'll just say it again, this is not a public forum. No, I'm asking, I, no, I'm asking you to understand that this is not a public forum. I'm, I'm just clarifying because you weren't here for the introductory remarks and I think that's why there's been some confusion. Okay, the, the, the school board meeting structure is that we have a public comment. Oh, great, thank you. Um, I think it's really important to recognize that Dr. Haynes has some information that might be beneficial and there is a second public comment, but if he... Excuse me, yes, sir, it was sent out today. Do you have your email? I'm not, look, I, I want to be clear. I'm not engaging with you one more time. You, you voted no, you're done. So, Dr. Haynes has a presentation for this evening. We will just continue this public comment because apparently that's not okay to hear that information first. So, anyone who has a comment, go ahead.
Are there any other public comments?
There is a second public comment on the agenda.
All right, okay. We will now move on to other donations.
Okay, I gotta put on my reading glasses. Okay, so, East Coast Lumber has donated some materials for the life skills. I'm asking you, the school board, to approve the acceptance of those materials.
Motion to accept.
Second, a second, that motion takes up. Any discussion?
Just thank you to the, um, thank you so much to East Coast Lumber. These materials will go to Making the Rain House that will help a number of students and it really is super awesome in light of all the other tough things we're facing, this is great.
The vote, Jamie. Jim?
Yes.
Hi.
Heather?
Hi.
Hi.
Amy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, East Coast Lumber.
Dawn, before you move on, I got a question. I'm not sure, did we skip over New Hampshire Charitable Foundation for $10,000 or was that in a different order?
Or, yeah, we did that first, we did that during...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Public hearing.
We flip-flopped them.
Yeah, we just flipped them around.
When we did it.
Yeah, okay.
All right, now, Dr. Haynes, if you'd like to present. And I am going to get...
So while we're getting the projector set up, I just want to clarify because doctor, in this situation, is going to be misconstrued. I'm not a physician. I'm a huge nerd who went to school for her PhD in curriculum and instruction. And I've been tasked with presenting the plan developed by the Sandburn Regional School District administrators. And we used and relied heavily upon the guidelines that were released on August 11th by the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services. All of those references and resources are located at the end of the documents that were sent out today through Constant Contact. If you did not receive a Constant Contact and would like to see those documents, we will make sure that those are posted to the school websites tomorrow as well so that you can also look at the same information that we used to create the plan.
Is it wireless?
Dan, should we get another projector?
Apparently tonight's the night that everything's...
Yeah, yeah.
Gotta love technology.
Brian, can you go get another projector? We'll do some other agenda items while we wait. Yeah, just keep going.
All right. All right, while we figure out our technical difficulties here, we're gonna move on and we will come back to this. So, we're gonna move on to 8.4 Bakey Trees. Matt?
Okay, so...
Can I ask everyone to quiet down a little bit so we can hear? Thank you.
All right, so, the facilities committee met at Bakey Elementary, I believe, two weeks ago to review three trees, three or four trees that need to be removed. We have three proposals. The first one's from Northern Tree Service for $4,425. The second one is from Mayor Tree Service, that's for $4,500. And the third one is from Wilders Tree Service for $3,500. We're recommending Wilders Tree Service for $3,500.
Could you just kind of, for the public in transparency, let folks know? Okay. Which trees?
I'm on the committee, I, you didn't do it, I was gonna do it, but if you want to do it, that's fine. One is dying, one is dead, and one is splitting. If you go to the front, if you go to where the kids go in the Bakey School, left the inside, the nice maple tree there, you'll see two nice big branches coming up and split right in the middle and as the water gets in there and freezes, that's, it's gonna get wider.
And, and I just want to say for the record that, that I viewed the trees with Dan Doyle first.
We had it, okay.
And I, I was not comfortable authorizing the removal of those trees without the facilities committee reviewing it because one of them is a really beautiful tree. The other two are kind of, it doesn't matter. But one, it really isn't, I, I didn't, didn't want to cut it down without everybody having a voice in it.
This, this advice came from an arborist.
Yeah, the arborist is sure, so I feel better now, but...
And the facilities committee is in agreement with the Wilders.
That's correct, the facilities committee approved it.
So we need a vote to authorize us to have...
Yes. I have a question, if I can jump in. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Jamie.
Um, does, do those quotes include the, um, the, the dead limbing of the trees, the removal of the, of the dead limbs? That was, I believe, part of what was discussed in the facilities meeting. And I haven't seen the quotes, were, were those included?
I believe it does.
Okay, and, and to Heather's point, yeah, the facility committee reviewed it and did agree that this needed to be done.
Dawn?
Yep.
He's got his hand up.
Yes, Jamie, if you were asking if the facilities committee reviewed this and agreed... Uh, yes, Jamie, if you were asking if the facilities committee reviewed this and agreed, yes, they did. That's what you were saying, Matt?
Yes, they did. Correct.
All right, uh, Jim?
I, I wasn't asking. I was saying it. I'm on the committee.
I thought you were asking. I was confused, but I thought I would just. Jim, did you have something?
Yeah, there was also stump grinding and removal involved, I believe. Matt, is that true for the other two quotes?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Grinding and remove.
Yes, it includes grinding.
And removal of the, of the trees that are cut.
At least so.
Um, okay, so we need to make that a condition of approval.
That it includes the grinding and removal?
Right.
Yes, I agree.
So we'd like a motion to accept pending that there's grinding and removal are part of them.
Yes.
Who made the motion?
I said we need a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion to accept.
With pending the grinding and the removal of the stump.
Yes.
Right, well, I think that, that's in the package.
Well, we want to make sure that.
We're going to clarify.
Oh, oh, I thought that, okay, I thought I saw it was in there.
I, I think it is, but we're going to double check.
Just to, 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 to further clarify, if I could, the tree across from the parking lot that a butts a neighbor's yard, that, that stump was going to remain, as I recall the discussions.
Right.
The others were to be taken out.
There's a tree that's in the property, near the property line, that's in the hedgerow. That stump will remain because it's not.
It's in the woods. You don't need to grind it.
Okay.
Never.
So I think we should approve it per the arborist's recommendations. We should approve Wilder's bid per the arborist's recommendations. Cause they were all, it was all specified what was going to be done.
Jim is asking Pete to modify his motion to say per the arborist's recommendations, just because it.
I'll agree to that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Get that, uh.
All right.
Second, I second.
Okay, great. All right. Um, any, Sammy, any further discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor? Jamie?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
Pete?
Yep.
Heather?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Myself, a yes. Are we?
We're getting there, but we'll keep.
All right. Uh, Matt, DOE 25.
Okay, um, so the DOE 25 is the financial report that, uh, that we have to submit to the state. And basically what it does is it summarizes our balance sheet and our income statement activity. Um, there's a copy of the DOE 25 in your, in the, um, the Google Drive. Um, and on page one, um, it's also going around for your signature. Okay, but on the first page of it, um, uh, the, the most important number on the far left-hand side of it is the amount of money that's being returned back to the taxpayers. And that is $2,282,088. Okay. The second number that's important on that page, if you move over one more column, which would be food service, there's a deficit, um, in that fund for $18,603. This is new this year, and it's primarily, primarily due to increased food costs. Basically, last year, 100% of our food sales was, uh, was from, um, being reimbursed by the federal government. And, um, so the reimbursement is less than the actual food costs. Now, the, the next thing that I want to point out, and it's, it's deep down in the report, so I'm going to scan down. Which is the per pupil cost. Um, what we saw was is that the, our current expenditures was pretty similar to the prior years. We saw transportation expenditures similar to the prior years and supplemental expenditures, um, similar. What we found different this year was food service revenue, which is being used to reduce the per pupil cost. We didn't receive any revenue from students because the federal government paid 100%. So, um, that drove up the per pupil cost. We also saw a reduction in the number of students So, um, the per pupil cost for elementary was $21,269. The middle school was $21,446, and the high school was $19,394. So it's an unusual year. Okay? But then again, the important number out of this is the amount being returned back to taxpayers, which is almost $2.3 million.
Oh, Jamie? Oh, Jim?
Yeah. Um. Matt, I had a chance to think about this since the finance meeting.
Hold on one second. Can I ask everyone in the audience to quiet down a little? It's really hard to hear him coming through the speaker. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'll try to, I'll try to speak up. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so I had a chance to think about this since the finance meeting. Um, we had, what, 1,450 kids in school this year, roughly?
1425.
1425. So at $18,000, that's just under $13 a kid. Is that the difference? Does that account for the whole difference in the cost per pupil?
Absolutely not. You, you, when you, when you reduce a school district of our size, the smaller the school district is, the greater the impact a reduction in student has on the cost per pupil. We only have 1550 on average. When I started here, I think it was 16 and a quarter, but don't quote me on that. I'd have to look it up. 1550, when you take a, a budget like ours and you, you reduce it from 1550 to 1425, that alone raises the cost per pupil by almost 2,500 to $3,000. When you, it's, it's the, I, I want to be clear that the problem with the cost per pupil, it really, the, the food sales portion and having that reimbursed by the federal government did contribute to the cost per pupil going up. But it did not contribute nearly as much as the very clear reduction in the number of students, which we anticipate will go back up this October 1st. So when we look at the budget for next year, we have to base it on our October 1st numbers. We, we are not seeing the number of homeschool requests this year, and we are seeing increased enrollments. We had to add teachers at some grade levels to accommodate for that, like at the middle school and at first grade. So it's, it's okay, but we just want you to know that we expected there to be a blip in this last year, and there was. It's almost exactly what we anticipated.
Thanks for that explanation.
You're welcome, Jim. It's confusing and very complicated, but the simple math is 125 kids didn't come to school last year. They either homeschooled or, uh, um, went to a private school, and I've spoken to a number of them myself, and they are coming back. So it's, it's, you know, this conversation tonight plays into that a lot as to what some of them might do for next year, as we've heard from parents. And I, and I understand that as a parent myself. Thank you.
All right.
You need a vote, Matt?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
Well, just to approve, well, you have to sign it. Either, either sign it, we might as well vote on it.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
A second. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote. Jamie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Maura? Aye.
Amy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The first public comment, yes.
Yes, the second one is coming up. Okay. Yeah, I think we're ready to go back to, we can do whatever you want. I think Patty's ready.
All right, Patty, you ready?
Yes.
Look at that.
I think we're even more ready now, hopefully.
So as I said earlier, my name's Dr. Patty Haynes. I am the director of, of teaching and learning here at the district. And I'm not a medical doctor. I have an advanced degree in curriculum and instruction, and I've been tasked with presenting the plan put together by the school administrators using the guidelines from the Department of Health and Human Services that were released on August 11th. So the school board will be voting on the plan that's presented today. The plan is based on the most recent guidelines from DHHS and takes into account local data on cases, and the references that I've referred to are on the last slide. Many of the guidelines are similar to what we used last year, especially with regard to testing. Masking. For all staff and students, masks are recommended in the building. All students, riders, and drivers are required to wear a mask while riding a school bus per federal guidelines. Athletics and activities. The athletic director will be updating participating students and their families on a regular basis with regards to plans around athletics at Sanborn. After-school activities will be conducted by building in accordance with any guidance from DHHS or the CDC. These are changing, evolving seasons, so we will be paying attention to what's going on with guidelines. Visitors and trips. Parents and visitors to the buildings will be permitted inside and are required to wear masks during transitions from one location to another. Masks may be required in meetings as well, especially meetings that have a lot of people and very little space. In-school group events will only take place in person if social distancing requirements can be met. Field trips will be limited. Building use by outside groups will be limited. COVID screening and testing. We are asking all of our families, parents, and guardians to screen children for symptoms of COVID-19 or any of the risk factors for exposure before sending them to school. We'll talk about those risk factors in a little bit. Any student with even mild symptoms of COVID-19 must stay home and get tested for COVID-19. Test results must be shared with the school nurse or principal. The district will be offering testing for students at school if they arrive at the nurse showing symptoms of COVID using the Binax Now antigen test. Permission to administer a test to a student with symptoms will be required from parents and guardians. Students or staff who have tested positive for COVID-19 can be allowed to return to school when one of the following conditions are met, and these conditions were set by the Department of Health and Human Services. And these are their algorithms that were used. Person receives an FDA-approved COVID-19 test that is negative, and the person's symptoms are improving, and they are fever-free for at least 24 hours off any fever-reducing medications. The list of approved tests include the PCR test, which is the one that takes a few days to come back, or the antigen testing conducted with an appropriate number of days since the symptoms showed up. The Binax Now test is available at most drugstores. If the person has met CDC criteria for ending home isolation, so if they're not tested, but they're treated as if they had the illness. This is the algorithm that was developed by the Department of Health and Human Services, not by the district. This is the algorithm that's in the toolkit that's referenced at the end of the slides and the one that we must use in order to make sure that we're following what the prescribed recommendations are. It includes in here a distinction between people who are household contacts, and that's an important thing to think about because this is different than what we're used to last year and what I think caused a lot of the angst and concerns among families. So a close household contact of someone who's diagnosed with COVID-19 has to quarantine. So people living in the same household, spending ex, ex, extended periods of time together with prolonged contact. Also, people in the same dorm, if you have children in college, at a sleepover, those are the folks who need to quarantine if they've been in the same location with somebody who comes down positive. Non-household contacts, so this is the classroom encounters that we have. These are the encounters you have in the grocery store. These folks are asked to self-observe and monitor for symptoms. This is not last year where we were sending groups of students home to quarantine for extended periods of time. So this is a change, an important one to keep in mind. If the non-household contacts develop symptoms, it's necessary to test them. So if you know that there's a case in your child's class, keep an eye, check if they've got symptoms, if they're developing symptoms, test them. We want to make sure that they get the support and medication that they need.
Dr. Haynes, does that mean that we, based on the way things were last year, because testing was required, but quarantining was also required for any exposure?
Right.
That we should theoretically have way less students quarantining?
Absolutely. So the household, right, the household contact is the big change here, and it's the change that you saw in the previous slide. And if you look at this algorithm, which again comes from DHHS, they look at close household contacts. The key difference this year that DHHS has been telling us is the amount of time, the prolonged exposure to somebody who's got it. You know yourself, you're living in the house, they're coughing, it's going all over, but you're going to get the same thing that they've got. So that's the distinction this year. If it's a classroom illness, you want to monitor that. Same thing as if pink eye was going through the class. We all remember the days when our kids came home with the note that lice was in the classroom, you got to keep track. Those kinds of things. So now the decision grid that we've included is the decision grid that is very similar to what DHHS put out in its last presentation. And the decision grid takes into account two different things. It takes into account what's going on in the community, and it takes into account what's happening at the schools. So community transmission levels are across the top. School impact is across the side. And depending on how these two things interact will make us think differently about what we're doing with masks or distancing. Give you an example. So if we have community transmission, and there's a lot of different ways to look at this, and not every single one of these is going to land the same. Rockingham County could be in a minimal spread, but our district towns might be in a moderate spread. So we've really got to think about what we're looking at here. And also think about how that's impacting what's happening in our buildings. School impact is going to look at, do we have transmission within our schools? Maybe we have somebody who just came home from traveling to visit relatives and they come home with it. If it's not spreading in the schools, it's going to be a different case than if it's spreading in the schools and we have one cluster, which is, we can tell that it's one person passed it on to a group of people. Two clusters might be two different people passing it out to two separate groups of people. We're going to look at what's happening in our buildings before we make hard, fast decisions. And so if we go back to the decision grid, if the, if it's a low level of impact, which also includes the number of staff that we have available, we have a large number of staff who are vaccinated and we're able to run classes, we won't need to be moving to masks or distancing. If it's moderate community transmission, we need to think about, are we looking at all of Rockingham County? Are we looking at the Sanborn sending towns? We need to think about all of that, and we'll be looking carefully to all of this information, which is also available on the dashboard that DHHS has made public.
Can I interject for one moment?
Yep.
I, I just want to be really, this is really hard to explain in writing, which is why I wanted Dr. Haynes to do the presentation. The real, the way, let's talk about how this is really going to play out, because there's the paper stuff, and then there's like life, right, that happens, and it's messy. Because we have three students sleep over on Friday night at their friend's house, and on Sunday, all three of them become sick and test positive for COVID. No one in their classroom is going to have to mask or quarantine as a result of that, because they haven't been back to school. If they came back to school on Monday and got sick Tuesday or Wednesday, we would have to assess the impact on the classroom and monitor for symptoms, not just immediately quarantine everyone. If a classroom needs to have, it, let's just say, let's play it out again, that if that classroom did show some impact and a couple of kids got sick, then we may ask that classroom to mask for a couple of weeks to support not having it spread further. However, that does not mean that the whole grade level or the whole school or the whole district would be masking. The way that we want to handle this is to be responsive to where the problem occurs. So if we need to look at one classroom for a short period of time or one grade level at a short period of time, our hope is that by being responsive by our nurses being in tune with the real-time data, the data from the state of New Hampshire or any state takes weeks to catch up with the ground. They're overrun at the state level. We, as a team, do not believe in waiting for the state. We believe in taking care of our community. And the way that we plan to do that is to have our nurses closely monitor what the data actually is in the school in real time, because what usually happens is they excuse me, it, it sounds like Siri's having a field day over there. It's okay, I've had it happen to me too. Sometimes I'm just walking and it starts talking to me, and my wife's like, are you okay? I'm like, no, not really, but I'm trying. Um, so I think it's really important to recognize that, that a lot of the data that the state gets comes from our nurses. I don't, people don't know that. That our nurses have, Diana Rooney in HR and our nurses spend hours sending contact tracing information to the state. They are so far behind naturally because there's so many districts. We need to base our information based on our nurses and our local response to the stimulus, not wait weeks until it gets worse. Right? Our goal is to not have kids have to quarantine. That is the goal. And our goal is to only have to wear masks if things are actually getting bad, for real, that we know. But there's a problem with this whole thing. Parents have to report to us. We can't do. We can't do this without parent input. We had some people send parents' kids to school with, hey, go, you're out, you're out, don't come back. I absolutely respect everyone in this room's opinion, but I am not going to tolerate bullying from anyone. I'm not being a bully, I'm explaining the information. Would you like to leave as well?
Can we, can we get on with the subject?
Yes, the subject, the subject is that we are happy to really work hard to try to not require masks in the school. That's our goal. And we want to use real-time data to make those decisions, and it's important when you're looking at this matrix to understand that we're not going to wait for the state data, but we need parents to tell us if they have a case in their house. That's all that we're saying. We can't do it without community, without the community working with us.
It's an impossible task, what we're being asked to do as a school district. Impossible. Because like the superintendent said at the beginning of the meeting, we're going to make somebody angry. And just like the rest of you, all of us have families too. All of us are dealing with this too. There's a lot of stress going on, just trying to get school ready in a normal year. Let's add this on top of it and have families come in who are upset because we're going to make a decision that somebody doesn't like. All we're asking from all of the families, no matter what the decision the board makes tonight, is to remember that we're all struggling together. We are. This was not an easy decision for the administrators. Department of Health and Human Services, a lot of times will drop information on us and expect a response within the next day. And we've had to turn around on a dime and change things. It's not fair to us either. All we're asking is, is to hear what we're saying, to understand that it's an impossible position, and to realize that we're doing the best we can under impossible circumstances. There was also a set of questions and answers that were sent out. And I don't want to go through every single question and answer, but there is something in the Q and A document, which like I said, we will post it to the website. But there's, there were questions, a lot of questions about what happens when my kid is quarantined. And I think the big thing to take away from this meeting about quarantining kids is it's only going to happen if they're in household contact with somebody who's confirmed to have COVID. This is not last year where everybody's going home quarantining and we're waiting to see, oh my gosh, you're going to turn into a pumpkin, like what's going to happen? That's not what's happening this year. So that's a huge change. Um, we had questions about sharing of supplies. We revised the plan to make sure that we're cleaning the supplies. If they need to be shared, we're going to try to make sure that we've got ample supplies going on. Um, the nurses and what they're doing, our nurses make sure they go through every trick in the book. Kid comes down with a stomach ache, well, is it a stomach ache, or do you not want to take the test? Or did you forget to eat breakfast this morning, or whatever? Like, you know, you're sitting next to somebody in middle school, too much Axe cologne on, who knows, headaches, who knows? There's all kinds of things that go on. They do everything that they can to make sure that that's um, whittled down before they call you. We don't want to call and send kids home either. We want to try to keep them in school the best we can. Um, now, question 10 talks about the household contact and non-household contact. Again, a lot of this stuff comes from DHHS. We didn't, we don't have time to create this stuff. Trust me, trust me, we don't have time. Um, the remote option, if you're really passionate about remote, Velax is the option for that. Um, it was very time-consuming and taxing for our teachers to switch back and forth. And we were not planning for Delta to become so vigorous and make us worry. But as one of the parents, I think Jackie Stickney, said, New Hampshire's in a different place than they are in Texas, Florida, Louisiana, Alabama, you know, all these other places that are having issues, so keep that in mind. So, um, Superintendent Ambrose spoke about this situation, so let's say there's a sleepover or party on a Friday. No school, let's say it's a long weekend, Columbus Day weekend, Columbus Day Monday. Three of the kids who were at the party are now sick. They're positive, which is why they're red. Tuesday coming back, and the parents say, okay, no, you're sick, you're staying home. We don't need to mask our kids because they haven't been directly exposed to them. But if it happened to be a party or something that happened over a regular weekend, then they come to school on Monday, and they've been hacking and coughing and go home, we might need to mask our kids for a couple of weeks. So this is where the helping each other out and in being honest about, you know, you're not feeling well, I'm keeping you home kind of a thing is important. And then the superintendent also spoke about what's going on person to person, if it's within a grade level, if it's within a school, if it's an issue at the elementary schools, and, you know, we've got students who had the option at the middle and high schools to be vaccinated, that could be an op, you know, an option this year, where we see it more with the littles. We need to look at that as a case-by-case basis. This is not a blanket yes or no kind of a thing. There's a lot of areas of gray and a lot of nuance. And rest assured, I can, I can honestly tell you it is difficult for us to make these decisions, and we spend a long time talking about them. We're families too. We're not trying to just, you know, make everybody's life miserable, because it's, it's just really, really difficult. So with that, I will turn it back over to the board. Um, thank you for being patient during our technical difficulties, but sometimes the equipment doesn't do what we want it to do.
Dr. Haines, can you post the F, the Q and A and the other information right on the website for those who may not have our contact, constant contact?
I will do that before I leave today.
Thank you very much.
So is a second public comment going to be after we have a vote?
So I was just going to ask.
Got a question of Dr. Haines, if I could?
Oh, Jim, do you have a question?
I do. Dr. Haines?
Yeah.
Um, on your presentation, that the supporting docs that you sent out, there's one that's called, where can I find our level of community transmission? I think it was page 22 of what you sent out.
Which document was that?
It's where can I find our level of community transmission?
I don't think I sent out a document that said that.
Well, it was, it was, it was sent out as the documents that your, your, the administration was basing its proposal on.
Oh, okay, from the D, from DHHS, yep.
Yes, exactly, yep. And it was page 22 of that. But it says, where can I find our level of community transmission? And then it shows a map of New Hampshire, and it gives some statistics.
So that's a fluid dashboard. That is maintained by Department of Health and Human Services.
Yep.
That's from their PowerPoint presentation on August 11th, and they update that regularly as soon as they get the information. And there's, last year, when we were dealing with this, there was a two-to-three, sometimes five-day lag on the updates.
I just have, I don't have a question specifically about the data, just about what it represents. That it says new cases per 100,000 over 14 days. And it's, gives a number, is that new cases, because they talk about, uh, what's the quote here, total onsite active cases, too. Is that by schools, or is that the total population?
So that's, that's a good question, and it's worth all of your time, because we all have so much extra time, I know, to go and just look at that dashboard, because there's a lot of different buttons and levels to look at. There's a lot of different things to click and look at. There's, you know, percentage of positive cases in the last seven days, the last 14 days, PCR tests, PCR plus antigen tests. You can dig into there and really look at a lot of stuff, and I think what Dr. Chan did when he put that together was just give a sample snapshot of what was on that dashboard. There's also vaccination rate information, and there's all kinds of stuff in there. You could get lost in there looking.
Yeah, it says, it says interactive map, so.
Yeah, right. So what I, what I would do is, and I will also put a link into that dashboard, take a look at that, because you, you really could find a lot out in there, and, you know, it's, it's just, it's fascinating, the information.
Thank you.
So I, I do want to say that my point earlier was that that, we have found through the course of the last year that that data is way behind our real-time data from our nurses. Because a lot of that data that's in that dashboard comes from our nurses. People don't understand the process that our nurses receive the reports of cases and report them to the, the, uh, to the dashboard, and it takes a long time for them to update that data. So I just want to be clear that we are more interested in working collaboratively with parents, having parents tell us what's happening, if they have cases at home, and then having the students reporting to the nurses and responding to the real-time data to prevent an outbreak than to wait for the state's website to update. It does eventually catch up. I just want you to know, it does eventually catch up. But the updates that, um, we post to our website every day are way more accurate and way more up to date. We do do that daily. And, uh, Dr. Haines will put that link in the, in the information that she'll share tonight, so that when school starts, we'll have that real-time view.
Can I add one more thing from the principals?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure, for, just for the board understands too. Um, I mean, as the principals, we're, we're working really hard to try to problem-solve when things are coming up or things aren't working for kids. So as much as possible, we, we need, we need parents to let us know what's working and what's not working along the way with all of this, right? So as Dr. Haines said, we want nothing more than try to, to try to problem-solve all of this and make this the best experience that we can for kids. There are things that we can control and things we can't control, but boy, we can problem-solve. I spent the first hour of my day today on a Zoom call with probably 25 other area New Hampshire high school principals, just because we're all trying to share ideas and resources and strategies, figure out if somebody's got a great idea for how to solve this in one community, let's try to see if we can duplicate that in others, and we'll, we'll continue to do that. And I know I'm speaking for all the principals in all the schools right now, but, but it, it really is priority number one. And just so the parents in the room know, we're all parents too, we all have kids in the schools too, so we get it, we share a lot of the same concerns and frustrations that people have. So there's no one solution that works for everybody, but we will try our darndest to, to find the solution for every kid.
All right. Um, would you like to take a quick five-minute break?
Yes.
Because we've, most of us have been here since like 4:30, so we need to take a quick restroom break. Um, and then we will come right back, and then when we come back, I think we should discuss if we want to move our second public comment up before we have our discussion, our deliberation. Um, okay, we're going to take a quick five-minute break, we'll be right back. All right, so since we are all back.
I agree with you. I'm just explaining why I'm right.
Since we are all back, we are going to start the meeting again. Sorry, I had to use my hockey mom voice to get everybody to hear me. Um, okay, so we, so if the board is okay, I would like to move second public comment to now, so that the public has a chance to speak before the voting. Um, is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
All right, Jamie has his hand up. Jamie?
I was just going to say the same thing. If people want to continue to comment, second comment, I would like to have that information before the vote.
Okay, great. All right, so we will open up second public comment. Um, if you have already spoken, we ask you not speak again. Um, and we will, to try and keep it fair, I have a timer set on my phone now, so I don't have to try and stop people at three minutes, we will hear this really annoying alarm go off. I, I don't know what it is, it's whatever it's set to. So it might be, it might be awful. I don't know. So, all right, if there's anyone, public comment is open.
Mine's more of a question. Vanessa Matias from Kingston. Um, the only thing that wasn't clear to me, and I don't know if you guys can help me, but does the quarantine reset if a new family member tests positive and then an additional family member tests positive? Do we know like it did in the past?
Uh, it, it really depends on the specific circumstances, so, uh, Dr. Haines, can you answer that? Because I think that's really important for the public to understand.
Because I couldn't find it on the, so, like, if I test positive, my son's out of school.
Right.
And then my other son tests positive, like, a week later, does it reset for my youngest, as it did in the past?
I, I would, I would say probably yes, but you know what? And I kid you not, email Dr. Chan at DHHS and ask him.
Okay.
Because that's one of the things that isn't in any of his presentations, but I think, because it, it just extends your timeline.
Yeah, but it also depends on symptom onset, like, there's so many other factors at that point.
I would email him personally.
Okay, so.
We have to not have conversations.
We shouldn't be having full-blown conversations.
Okay. Well, I guess that sort of plays into my next thing, is, you know, my major concern with this is just, I need to make sure that you guys are really forward-thinking, how are you going to support students that run into those type of situations? You know, there could be students that are on extended quarantine or isolation guidelines. I did email each of the principals with a generalized statement saying, hey, how are you going to support the students? And they were all very thoughtful in their responses, but I just don't know that it was thoughtful enough. If my younger student falls behind, the work is home grade, I can help them, but if my eighth grader falls behind in math, guess what? I can't help him, you know what I mean? So he's going to need some additional school support, and if he falls into that criteria where it keeps resetting and he's three weeks out, and math is a type of domino effect, well, what is the school going to do? So I need to make sure that you guys are really thinking that out for families.
Thank you.
That's my comment.
Hi, my name is Allison Rollins, and I am a mother of three children, one being a second grader at Bakersfield School. Um, I'm for parental rights. It's my right to choose if my child wants to wear a mask or not, and it's other people's rights to put masks on their children. Um, I am a local emergency room nurse. I have been this whole pandemic. Um, I was.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And I'm a big advocate for school because, to be in session, because I cannot work evenings and nights in homeschool. It's just not fair to my child, or me, or my poor husband. Um, with that being said, um, at our hospital, we have the Abbott test, the Binax Now. It is 20% accurate. Um, it is so inaccurate that we have established a policy and protocol where if you test negative, you automatically get a PCR test that's sent out. Um, you need to, you need to let this COVID fester for a good five to seven days before you will get a positive test. If we get a positive Abbott test, we're like, oh my God, wow, you know, it, someone, you know, their viral load must be so high, it's detecting it. I'm just concerned that, say, my child goes to the nurse with a runny nose, because he woke up with a runny nose, gets an Abbott test that's negative, gets sent back to class. Three days later, I'm like, you know what, you're still kind of snotty and runny, and, you know, let's go to your doctor and get a PCR. Comes back positive, now what? Now what happens? That's, you know, that's just my big concern, um, because I don't want a whole classroom to be out. Um, so I guess that's it.
Thank you.
Hi, Kristin Stogren, Kingston. Um, I guess my biggest question is regarding Velax, is that something that is available for all grades? And can a student float from that to being in school? I have a child with severe anxiety. Um, in his IEP last year, part of his agreement was that he would actually make it to school three days a week. Um, and if he did, he was rewarded. On those days, it was a constant struggle for him to be in a mask. He often spent a good portion of his day in the room with his IEP person, because, just so that he could take that mask down for a little while. Um, it greatly affected his learning. All his test scores at the end of the year were super low, because he missed so much. School, um, spent a lot of time playing catch-up. If this is another issue, and everybody's, oh, well, just do Velax, because there's no remote, there's no, um, you know, can the kids float from one to the other? I mean, if they're missing a day at school, can they log into Velax, or are they just? Or are they just, it's going to be one or the other and there's no, there's no accommodations for these kids, kids with illnesses, kids with anxiety, kids that have IEPs and you know, these things have to be met. But how, you know, where, where do we draw the line? Where do we? How do we work with this kind of situation? Because he's going into sixth grade and it, it's a big deal. He's just going to fall further and further behind. And you know,
We're, so we're not going to do a question and answer because we're supposed to be hearing public comments about the plan. You're asking an important question that I'll try to at least say. Every student has different needs. And for your situation, what I would recommend is that you reach out to Jody Gudermann and Dr. Haynes and we'll try to figure out what we do to help your child.
I just want to know that, you know, he's not the only one that there there'll be accommodations and that there'll be something.
There's information about the questions that you have in the question and answer. And for each, for individual students, if people have questions, they should reach out to their school principal or Dr. Haynes or Mrs. Gudermann. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Josh Leclerc. I live in Newton. And I just want to address everybody here. I look around up here and I see most of you are not wearing a mask and, and I look out here and I see most of you are not wearing a mask. I understand the concerns of, you know, certain people, the, the couple that was sitting over here, you know, they, they want to wear the mask and that's, that's their prerogative. They, I get it. You know, they want their kid to wear a mask at school. That's, I get it. Excuse me. It wasn't me last time. I just want to be afforded the same choice. And I, and I'm sure most of these people want to be afforded the same choice. That's what we're all here for, you know? I, from, from a kid, I, I, I don't like being told what to do. And I, you know, and I appreciate that I live in a country that's free. Every day that goes by, it seems like we're slowly losing some of these freedoms. And, and that's why I came here tonight. It's very important to me to protect my freedoms, to protect your freedoms, all of you, protect your freedoms. And I just, I appreciate that you're considering what's before you tonight in the plan. I really do. I, 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 last year wasn't even a consideration. It was just, this is what's going to happen. I pulled my, my kid right out of school because he's got asthma. He has a very hard time breathing on his own without a mask on his face all the time, you know, so. And, and, and when I put him on, you know, when we go to the store and I have to put a mask on him. His personality changes immediately. He hates it. It's like I'm putting a muzzle on my kid. And I, and I understand some people want to do that to their kid. I don't. And I want, I want that choice. And I think all these people want that choice. Most of these people want that choice. That's all I got to say. That's all I got to say.
Natalie Hatch from New Hampshire, yeah, I'm in New Hampshire, right? And I'm a nurse. I've been a nurse for 27 years. I have four kids, one's grown. Three that are in the school system, one and we're actually sending to private school. Nothing to do with the school system. It's just his needs. When I am not as an artist, I'm going to prove that right now. I want to show you one of my favorite infographics. It's this big circle with a dot in the middle. Everybody see that? This is like everyone's life, what you know about it. And I just want everyone to keep that in mind. I appreciate the work you guys put into the plan. I think it looks really thoughtful. It's never going to make everyone happy right now. I'm disappointed to see that people make assumptions. I walked into this room with no mask on. I'm an oncology nurse. Family members who have cancer that are on immunotherapy. I put my mask on because there were a couple of people coughing and sneezing. I'm not saying anybody else should be wearing one, but that's why I made that choice this evening. So I think choice is very important and I appreciate that you guys put that into the plan. I don't want to take anyone else's choice away. But I think, you know, ideally it'd be great if COVID wasn't here. That would be the A1 number, you know, the best solution. That's not one of our options right now. You know, I think if everyone wore a mask, maybe things would be different, but I'm not a scientist. I don't know. I'm a nurse. I know masks work. So what I wanted to say was just that thank you for your thought into the plan. I think it looks good. It's never going to make everyone happy. But I have to say I'm disappointed with some of the reactions of our community. Cause when this is all over, we're still neighbors and parents who have kids in the same school system that are going to be friends. And I think we just need to do a little bit better. That's all. Thank you.
All right, if there's no further comment. Move on.
Sorry, he's way in the back.
There's always one.
Hello. My name is James Hasselbeck. I'm a Kingston resident. I have three children in the district. I also run a construction company in four different states with 300 plus full-time employees and over 700 subcontractors. So I'm an execution guy. I really appreciate the thought and details that have gone into this plan. A lot of thought. I have to write this plan to cover four states and a thousand plus people. It's hard. There is no perfect solution. Someone will always be disappointed. The one thing that will not disappoint everybody is if our children stay in school for the entire year. That is the one piece of common ground that I believe that every single person agrees in this room. How we get there is a challenge, right? But the one thing that everybody wants is our kids to be in school in person and get in front of their teachers and their friends. We missed that last year. We need to achieve that this year. The way that I think we can do this is to slightly amend the plan. Masks are demonstrably effective in reducing COVID-19 transmission. There is no question about that. I get it. I have an eight-year-old, a six-year-old and a four-year-old. They hate it. It's a challenge. It sucks. You know what sucks more? Having all three of those kids at home. When I'm trying to go to work, when my wife is trying to go to work and we're trying to also maintain our social and community investments. So from my perspective, I suggest the board adds one amendment to the existing plan. You can keep hissing and I disagree with your inability to listen to facts and science and react on emotion instead of practicality. We need to focus on practicality. We need to focus on keeping our children and teachers in school. That is the most important thing this entire group can do. I don't want to talk about mandating vaccines. That is a bridge too far. What we can do is make a small amendment to your existing plan. And instead of saying masks are recommended until we get to the high community transmission. And table A and table B, the plan is good. I read it. Table A and table B are super helpful. Incredibly difficult to implement across multiple buildings, multiple towns. At home, folks are all over the place. It looks great on paper. It's going to be really hard to execute. This is my life. I'm an execution expert. It's going to be really challenging to execute this plan successfully. My recommendation to the board is you make a small amendment to the plan to require mask use anytime we go above the low transmission. That one small switch amended to the low transmission, masks are recommended. Medium transmission, high transmission, masks are required. And if you can make that amendment, I would strongly encourage the board to vote to approve this plan and keep our kids in school for the entire year.
Scared me.
My name is Daryl Ruel. I'm a resident of Newton. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I wasn't going to speak at all. But I'm also have been in the construction industry for 20 years. I spent the past year and a half on various job sites. 200 guys, 400 guys, 500 guys, masks, no masks. There was no difference in the transmission level from masked to unmasked job sites. You still had transmission. You still had it happen. We all know COVID exists. The thing you guys should be stressing is how to boost these kids' immune systems. Nobody here has said one thing about it. It's, it's basic exercise, nutrition. These are the things you guys should be sending out. Not, we have to mask the kids, not, we have to put the kids in a bubble, not any of that. We need to educate these parents on how to boost their child's immune system. Your best defense against this is your own immune system. That mask on that guy, you would not be allowed to enter an asbestos laden area with that on. The size of the, of the coronavirus particle is so much smaller than asbestos. How is that honestly going to protect you? We all can pick and choose whatever data we want to read. We all can pick and choose whatever studies we choose to read. We can pick and choose whatever we want. It's basic common sense. That's what needs to be thought of. It's not on this side, that side, left, right, wrong, whatever. It's basic common sense. That's what I ask you go with. You were, if there's no amendment to the plan, if you want to amend the plan, put in there some policy of how to boost your immune system, of what it actually takes to prevent disease. Something, but not to just lock the kids up, masks, stay home, whatever. I just ask you use your basic common sense. Thank you.
All right. If there is no further public comment, we will move on. All right. So Dr. Haynes has presented her plan. We we've had our chance to ask. Does anyone have any further questions for Dr. Haynes? Make a motion. Okay. All right. So I will accept a motion.
That's me folks. No, I'm going to make a motion that masks are optional. And I'm going to give you my logic as to why as soon as I get a second. If I don't get one, then I'll be quiet.
So you want to accept the reopening plan as presented?
Make a motion for discussion.
Well, I'm making a motion that they would be optioned.
To accept the plan that Dr. Haynes.
Second, and then we can have comment.
So you're looking to accept the plan that Dr. Haynes presented tonight, the Sanborn Regional School District reopening plan.
My interpret, okay, I guess I interpreted that as optional.
It is until we reach a certain threshold.
Well, that, that's, that would be in a, I thought that would be part of the discussion, but whichever way you want to handle it, it's fine with me.
Second, second.
Okay. All right. Now we have discussion.
Okay. So I'm going to give you my logic first. All right. Why, why I'm choosing this way. I believe that mask optional isn't taking away anything or granting anybody anything. You still have the option. If you believe masks work. And I think there's a lot of data that says that. And that gentleman was right. Depending on what you read will support your opinion. But I think it's for the decision of the parents to decide. If you think that masks are important for your child, then tell your child, you've got to wear the mask. If you want to say, no, I think it's all right. And Jim, you're absolutely, sorry, Jim, you're absolutely right. Keep the kids in school. Now, this is my decision today. Things would change perhaps tomorrow. That we're going to have to revisit this and maybe even reverse my decision. But as of what I know now, I think letting the parents choose what they want and what they feel is best for their child. That doesn't take anything away from anyone. If you feel your child should have, wear a mask, your child wears a mask. It doesn't grant anyone anything. You have to wear a mask because I believe you should wear a mask. So to me, you're right, this is a free country and, and, and I shouldn't be dictating how you do your children. And the information out there, let's face it, folks. I mean, I taught right upstairs. Some of you are my students. A pandemic is political, it's emotional, yes, but it's political? Where did that come from? All right. And we've all seen it. And I don't want to get too long, but you've got a the president, the president, he has his shots and he wears the mask. Dr. Fauci comes out and says, take your shot. And he wears two masks. What message are they sending? You wonder why we're confused. So I'm not going to put my confusion on you. I'm going to say you decide. They're your children. That's how I feel. If you want to wear the mask, tell your kid you wear your mask. If you don't want to wear the mask, your choice. If your kid, I had my shots. If I didn't, whatever the result I get is out of that is, it's my choice. So my feeling is it doesn't take anything from you, doesn't give you anything, either side. No matter what you feel. If you were in my class, you know, I always said, you may not agree with me, but if you see my logic, that's all I can ask for. So my decision is, what do you want for your children?
Jamie? Jamie?
Yeah, can you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. So I had a nice written statement that I'm not going to use. Talk about some of the comments that have been made and, and some of my own feelings. Like Pete, I think that we have to make a decision tonight and I want to explain why I'm going to be making the decision that I'm making and how I'm going to vote. The one thing I want to point out is we seem to have, have lack in our community, United States, New Hampshire, Sandburn Regional School District, of a little bit of charity and understanding that people make decisions because they think they're right. It doesn't make them evil. It doesn't make them that they're trying to do something to harm you. They're doing what they think is right for their family. And if everybody could simply remember that the people that disagree with them have reasons for disagreeing with them. We're not all going to agree on this. It, it isn't going to happen. And, and so I, I applaud people that, that stayed on topic and, and stayed respectful. Because there are different opinions here and, and a couple of people have made the point that you can find data to support anything you want to support. So I've heard, I've heard people say that the masks are clearly demonstrated to impede transmission. I've heard other people say they're not. I've seen the WHO come out, the WHO recently. That there's no definitive evidence that it prevents transmission effectively. I am one of the critics of what the WHO has done. So you know, that you can find comments from all the people that are supposed to know the facts where they contradict each other. And they contradict themselves. So it is a difficult decision to have to make and, and it's not just what are we going to do? I remember talking last summer and saying, we're going to be dealing with this again next summer. And I'll tell you this summer that we're going to be dealing it again next summer. It is a viral disease. It's not going away. We're talking about a Delta variant. That's the third, the fourth letter of the Greek alphabet. There will be more variants. That's what viral diseases do. They mutate. They have a will to survive. That's what they do. So the question to me becomes more not just what are we doing today? But are we prepared to continue to do it forever? What are the risks? So there's a lot of belief in some that the risks are you just put the mask on and you prevent the risk. There is risk to masks. I, I believe Mrs. Thomaso, and I'm sure I'm butchering that name. I'm sorry. Pointed out the respiratory system. That the fact of the matter is there are studies that show when it stands to common sense, the gentleman that just made that point. That when you are putting a mask on, you are blocking the normal intake of air. Studies indicate that you can get up to 25,000 parts per million. So I read that study. I've read every study I can find. I went back and I checked, what does OSHA say? OSHA says anything over 5,000 parts per million is detrimental to the health of adults in the workforce. What do we think that that's happening to young children? That we're mandating this? I, I'm not prepared to mandate that. And, and I've had some heart tugging emails from people that want to see a mandate. And I'm very sympathetic to their conditions and concerns. But I have to balance that But I have to balance that against the entire district and some of the negative impacts. So I apologize for not being there tonight because I can't see the people that are commenting. I can't read their face. And it's important to be able to do that. It's important for me to be able to do that on a board. How much more important is it for the child that is attempting to learn to be able to do that? When the teachers are teaching and when they're interacting because they learn through their interactions also. So when I, when I look at all these things in a balance and I try to decide what, what is the, the best decision to be made? I think the decision to be made is that we do go with the plan. We do support an optional situation. Parents make the final decisions. I concur that we are more and more taking away decisions from parents. One gentleman said that the vaccine mandate would be a bit too far. That's coming too. And at some point in time, nobody likes to talk about what are the true morbid numbers about death. But the fact is, young children 10 and under have a higher mortality rate than the flu. So let me restate that. The flu 10 and under has a higher mortality rate than COVID. Certainly, as you get older, those numbers get blown away and COVID is far, far more deadly. But we're talking about kids in school. We didn't do this for the flu. We did do it for a year. And I just can't go with the policy of saying it will be mandated. And have that be the precedent that can go forever. We did it last year, somebody made the point that we did it last year, we mandated it. We kept the kids in school, no, not the whole year. Yes, we missed the better part of a month and a half, but we did a heck of a lot better than most of the other schools. So I support the plan. There are aspects of the plan that I think can be improved and going through the questions and answers. I have questions, I'm a parent. And I will provide constructive criticism to the administration. And I found that they generally will listen to constructive criticism because they're trying to get it right also. And there is no master blueprint that works. And in the end, I have to make the decision that, that we will trust in our parents and in their parenting rights. And there is no definitive data that one can point to without being able to immediately point to counter data that states the opposite. And that being the case, I support the plan. So thank you for listening.
Oh, okay, I guess.
You made the motion.
Maybe you have something to say, it didn't.
Yeah.
I was looking at your body language. I was never good at that.
So I appreciate the level of dedication and commitment that the administration did in putting this. Jamie had spoken about some heart wrenching emails that he received. And I wanted to talk a little bit about, I got a significant number of emails, phone calls and texts from Bucky parents K through three who are extremely concerned for the masks recommended. These families deserve to be heard and acknowledged. Many of these families admitted to me that they were afraid to come tonight because of being retaliation by fellow community members. And seeing one of our own Sandburn High School students get heckled and laughed at made really reinforce that decision. And as Natalie said, we are a community. We are all, we're neighbors, we're friends. I went camping with most of you, a lot of you people, I've, our kids have played sports together. And I'm really worried that a lot of our friends who are going to send their kids to schools in masks are going to be bullied and retaliated against because a large number of people here today are against that. I really just want to make sure that these families that are extremely worried and extremely scared are heard and validated. Because they were, they were not comfortable coming tonight, and that really speaks volumes.
We don't, we're not taking public comment right now.
They're asking, you know, they were asking for a lot of things that people have spoken about tonight. And I just want us to work together as a community to keep our community safe. You know, our numbers are currently low. You know, as Jacqueline said and Dr. Haynes say, like New Hampshire, we're lucky, we're so lucky to be in the Northeast. It's completely different than the Southeast. But what happens when numbers go up? I'm worried that when numbers do go up and we may have to mask, we are going to treat our community members poorly again. So I really just want to make sure that we work together collaboratively and be kind to each other.
Um, I guess I'm, I'm in favor of the plan. There are a few things I don't like in the plan. But I like the overall mask optional recommended. I don't believe that this virus is going away. I think it's going to stay with us for a long time. It kind of, as Jamie said, are we prepared to do this forever? There are a lot of things that are in this plan that I don't really don't like in kind of what Jamie said, are we prepared to do this forever? Are we prepared to do this forever, having these COVID tests? I, you know, I don't think that these numbers show what are like hospitalization rates. I don't think rates, I don't think it shows the whole picture of what's out there. But I do appreciate some of the thought that's put into it, which is looking at our kids having sleepovers, are they hanging out together to try to take it to the next step of, is this school transmission or not? So I'm going to be voting in favor of this, but understanding, I hope that we can change this as we go. I think this is a good starting point. And as some of the other people on the school board have said, I think we all need to be respectful of everyone. And I think some people really spoke very well tonight. And we do need to remember that we're a community. I have very strong opinions about this, but I will be respectful of other people and their decisions. And I guess that's all I have to say.
So I, I want to thank everyone in the community there. We have, as other people have mentioned, we've had a number of people reach out with emails and texts, et cetera. In my response to everybody, and I tried to respond to everyone that contacted me, I, you know, I try to make a point of communicating how, how sort of sorry, you know, I'm sure we all are, how we were, we are in this together. We need to remember that we're in this together. I am prepared to support the plan. I certainly communicated, I believe that to everyone that communicated with me that the administration was going to support a plan that recommended masks in the conditions that we're in. And I hope that the conditions remain where we are. But we need to be prepared, I think, to accept the fact that if transmission levels rise, then we are probably going to have to make different decisions. I mean, I hate wearing the mask as much as anyone. I think probably education is better without masks. But I, I do have a lot of sympathy and a lot of compassion for the, the people that reached out to us who weren't here tonight to speak. Who are very concerned, fearful for their children, especially young children who aren't eligible to receive a vaccine if they would choose to receive one. Hopefully there, hopefully there will be a vaccine approved for parents that choose, you know, to have that for their younger children. So I, you know, I, I, as I said, I'm prepared to, I'm prepared to support this plan. But I echo everything that everyone else has said. We, we are one community. We need to, we need to understand the needs of everyone in our community.
Jim, did you have anything you would like to add?
Thank you. Yeah, first off, I want to thank everyone who sent emails and who spoke tonight. A lot of thought and a lot of passion. And obviously, the parents have worked very hard to express what it is that they have on their minds regarding their children and how they want us to, to respond tonight in terms of a vote. I also want to thank the administration for all the work and all the documentation to show the work that they did. And, and the supporting documentation from the New Hampshire Department of Health. And I think, you know, we're not scientists, as somebody said. I think Dr. Haynes said that, we're not medical people. And I, I can respect positions by the CDC and the WHO. But New Hampshire, they're, they're making decisions for the entire country or recommendations for the entire country. New Hampshire's not the entire country, we're not Georgia, we're not Florida, we're not Texas, we're New Hampshire. And the New Hampshire Department of Health is the, the public organization that has their finger on the pulse of, you know, what's going on in New Hampshire. They're, they're saying that they don't think a mandate for masks is necessary. And they put together a whole grid of considerations on how things could unfold and at what point they think masks may be necessary. But I also agree with, with what Pete and Jamie and Mara said that it's different data for different folks. For some masks may cause emotional and psychological and biological harm. And for others, masks, going without masks may enable this spread of infection. And there's, there's no black and white answer here. But I think my opinion is we have to go with the Department of Health's recommendation. And I support the, the masks being optional for, for where we're at at this time. I, I think it's, it should be up to the parents to decide how they want their kids to come to school. Another person said that most important thing is to keep school open, and I totally agree with that. But I also think equally important is that parents have the right to decide how their kids are going to come to school, wearing masks or not wearing masks. And like Pete said, it doesn't take anything away. If you feel you need a mask and it's going to give you protection, wear it. If you don't think you need a mask and it's not going to matter, or it's not going to give you the protection, don't wear it. Let, let the parents decide what, what they're going to do in that regard. And that's how I'm going to vote. I'm going to support the plan that the masks are optional or recommended. But in, in my view, that means optional and until conditions may change to where we have to revisit it. Thank you.
So I'm going to, for my two cents in, first last, so a lot of my comments have already been made. I want everyone to understand how difficult this is. None of us up here want to make these decisions. None of us are scientists, we've said it. But we have to make some decisions because the can keeps getting kicked down the road to us. I will support this plan that is presented. And the gentleman that spoke, one of the last people to speak, he kind of stole my thunder. Because one of the things that we don't talk about enough is making sure that our children are healthy and boosting their immune system. I went to school, I'm a health coach. That's something that's really important, whether you decide to wear a mask or not. Depending on which side you listen to, it doesn't matter which side you're on. He is making sure that our children are healthy. They need to eat healthy foods, not sugars, not tons of carbs, not lots of chemicals. They need to eat lots of healthy foods. They need to get plenty of rest. They need to exercise. They need to be with their friends. They need to be in the school building. There are a lot of things that need to happen. So it sounds like we're going to end up, you know, pushing this through. But I want all the parents at home to understand that there are lots of things they can do to, to help support their students. So I guess I will end it at that.
Am I allowed to have public, like a comment as a student, just like an opinion?
I think we're, we're done with public comment at this, we're going to.
Unfortunately, yeah. So I guess at this point, we're ready to move the motion and go to a roll call vote. So we will start, Jamie.
So the, the motion is to approve the plan as presented, correct?
I would like Mr. Broderick to clarify his motion because he, it was a little muddy there. Can you just clarify?
My interpretation was just like Jim's was, mask optional. But I think the presentation was mask optional.
Well, it was at this time with this level of.
Well, yeah, oh, yes, I mean.
We, we need a clear motion, is there a motion to adopt the plan as written?
That's, I'll amend my motion to that.
Thank you. Just wanted to be clear for the record and the transparency of the whole thing.
I was going to say.
I seconded that, I amend my second to match whatever he just.
Thank you.
All right, so roll call vote, Jamie? Jim?
Yes.
I.
Heather?
I.
Mara?
I.
Jamie?
Yes.
And myself is a yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. All right, so.
Three minute break.
Let's go in and go get ready for non-public.
Okay, we can do that.
I'm sorry.
BEB. Can we just do the? Can we just do the two policies? Or just do the one policy and then take a break? Pete, are you okay if we just do this one policy and then take a break?
Wait a minute, I want to talk about BEDB.
Yeah, that's what we're going to talk about.
Right.
You want to have a quick break or you want to? Are you asking for a break?
Sorry, people were there.
Take a quick break before.
Well, I just figured it's going to be confusing for us to try to talk. That's, that's really what I was doing.
We'll just take a quick call.
Yeah, I mean, once they clear, we'll go.
Go on.
When they're, when they're deliberating and they're making comment, they vote, you don't vote. So you can't kind of interject when they're voting. I, I noticed that I didn't speak after they spoke.
Oh.
Right, and I don't.
Yeah, Jim, I won't be able to hear you. One second.
Okay.
Once it clears out here, we'll be able to hear what you have to say.
Okay.
Does everybody have this policy with you?
Was it in our group? It was.
It's. Well, I just, I mean, I'll, I'll point out now what I was going to point out. Would you read the, would you read the first sentence of the last paragraph?
Hold on, we'll get. Okay, Jim, yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you, did I hear that we're not doing policy IF tonight? Or that we are?
This is seven, five.
Can we hold on a second?
Yeah, sure.
Sorry. Jim, what was it?
Are we, are we doing policy IF tonight or not?
No, we are not, that has been moved to the next agenda.
Okay. Thank you, that's, that's all I had.
There's a little more work that needs to be done to it before it goes for deliberation.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I think, so we will move to policy BE.
EDB, right. If you look at the last paragraph for a sentence, the agenda and supporting materials should be distributed to the board members at least seven, five days prior. What do you want, seven or five?
Oh, I think it's supposed to say seven to five days.
Seven to five days?
Seven to five day, like between seven and five days.
And then they never eliminated the five.
Yeah, can we fix that? Can we just make it five? Because it should be five, we do it five days in advance.
I thought it was seven, but okay, I don't care, either one, it's just easy.
Usually send everything out by Friday.
And it's.
And the meetings Wednesday.
All right, so you want that to be a five?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for catching that.
Can you propose that amendment when we do?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's just.
Yeah, but it should be.
The seven or five, whatever you want.
A formal motion.
All right, so Tom, do you want to talk about?
Oh, yeah, yeah. No. No.
All right.
All right, so the, the change is that we'll add the language that is in bold that was shared by Will, by Will Phillips. And it says, requests to address the board on matters not on the agenda must be presented to the superintendent and must, must set forth the specifics of the subject to be addressed. Decisions to include the agenda items suggested by staff members, students or citizens shall be made consistent with board policy BE. So Will just found that there's a link to the other policy that we amended earlier tonight. And he wanted that language in there. The second amendment would now be to remove the word seven from the last paragraph because it's confusing. I think we had a modification in the past and it did not, it did not get edited or carried. So for clarity, let's just change that as well. So we would need a motion and a second and then discussion.
You make a motion to move that to five days. Oh, well, actually you want, well, you can only make a motion.
No, you could do, you could do to, to, to. No, you can do, you could do to, to, to change the policy as amended.
Oh, okay. Even better. Right. Okay. Make a motion to change the policy as amended.
Any discussion? All right. Roll call vote. Oh, sorry. Hand up.
Yep.
Okay.
I think the school board should have a, a role in that as well because it, it should be requested of the superintendent, but the school board should be the ones that decide whether or not we'll hear it.
The, the school board doesn't decide what goes on the agenda. The superintendent does per policy.
Well, we're talking about the policy, aren't we?
Yeah.
There are other policies. This is one.
It's been that way.
You're right. We are. Yeah. Hold on. If we're going to do that level of surgery on this policy, we need to come back to it. Because honestly, I don't have any meat tonight to, to dig into this. I mean, this is a, a very, if you look at it consistent with RSA 9183, I'm not prepared to rewrite the whole.
Okay. Not only that, there are any number of policies that.
Yeah, we'd have to cross-reference.
Superintendent sets the agenda with the, not, not with equally, but you.
Right.
With, in conference with, or whatever you want to call it, with the chair.
This has never been a problem.
Yeah, right. You know, but there's this, I bet there's five or six that are going to refer to the superintendent setting the, setting the.
Well, not only that, I'm not even going to go into this. It's too much.
Right.
So do we need a?
We can amend it as is and then take it back to policy for consideration later if we want to.
Yeah, good idea. Get this one behind us and then Jim can bring up any changes he wants to bring.
Okay. All right. So the motion will carry us.
Well, yeah, yeah. I mean, you're not going to change your emotion, right?
No, no. Let's, let's get this one done. And I mean, I, I will tell you, when I first came on the board, I thought that was odd too.
Yeah.
All right. Because the board is in control, you know?
Right.
So I see where Jim's coming from, but it's always been a no problem thing. And if it ever turned into a problem, the board would just simply change the policy.
But if we change this policy, we're going to have to look at other policies.
No, this is, this policy recommendation is a result of Will reviewing things for the public comment policy.
Okay.
And he said to just change this part because there wasn't, it wasn't clear about requesting to address the board on matters. So this is, this is designed to put the chair and the superintendent in control appropriately with what goes on the board agenda, because if it's on the board agenda, it can be addressed in public comment. Public comment is for items that are on the board agenda. Without this in there, it opens some valves, is all Will was saying. It, it really is just a procedural alteration. If we get into the business of having the board approve every single board agenda before it's sent out, I, I don't even know how I'd do that. And that's why I want.
That's not what I, what my comment was.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim. I thought it was. Thank you.
No, but, but there are, there are also, also policy references where the board has to determine whether something could be changed and, and added to an agenda during a meeting or not.
Yes.
So I'm not talking about the board approving the agenda, but approving in addition to the agenda after the fact.
Oh, thanks. I'll look into that and get back to you, Jim. I understand now. Thank you so much for clarifying. I completely misunderstood you.
Oh, Jamie, I see your finger.
His fingertips.
So the, my only comment would be kind of like what Pete had said. To me, the, the meeting, it's a school board meeting. The chair should be the final decision makers, what's on the agenda. And it should be done absolutely in consultation with the superintendent. But it shouldn't be the superintendent gets to put an agenda together and overrule the chair. It's the board's meeting, not the superintendent's meeting.
Jamie, if that happened in practice, your superintendent wouldn't be with you very long. So I agree with you. That just doesn't happen in practice. We can talk about that language, but it just doesn't. If, if I told Dawn, no, we're doing the agenda this way tough, we would have a problem.
Yeah, exactly.
Superintendent. I mean, it's just.
You're not my concern, Tom.
I know, I know. The future superintendents. I know, I know.
When you win the, when you win that damn lottery and don't share it with us and go skipping off to London for a couple of years.
I, I hear you.
Can we?
Move them. Yes, let's move the motion. All right. Roll call vote, Jim.
I, I don't, I don't agree with the motion as it's written, so I'm going to vote no.
Jamie.
Aye.
Aye.
Heather.
Aye.
Mara.
Aye.
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Hey, Jim, give me a buzz. We'll, we'll talk.
Sure.
We're good.
And then eight, uh, policy IF, we, we're moving to.
We're moving.
It, it may not be on the next agenda. It's just being, I need to do more homework. The policy committee agreed to table it until at least the next policy committee meeting, which is the first week of September. Jamie, I'm working on it. I'm just trying to get it right.
Yep. Well, I was going to, yeah, if that one came up, I was going to say, I don't see some of the things I want to see. So I was going to, I was going to ask some questions.
I'm wondering if we need to just develop a policy, Jamie. I'll let you know.
All right. Since there is no old business and we've already moved second public comment. If anyone has anything to put on the next meeting agenda. And the next.
Can we do this again with public carings again?
The next Sanborn Regional. Twenty one at 6:00 PM in the library at Sanborn Regional High School.
Okay. Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we go into non-public session on RSA 91 dash A colon three, number two.
Section.
All right. Roll call vote, Jim.
Yes.
Jamie.
Aye.
Pete.
Yep.
Heather.
Yes.
Mara.
Yes.
Yes. Myself, yes. All right. We are now in non-public.